Cell phones, you can put them on vibrate or shut them off, please. Vice Chair?
Okay.
Did you get your list?
We're gonna wait in the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It being seven o'clock, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, 500 Glenwood's Way. The first order of business is hold the new business. We are going to wait on the approval of the minutes until the next meeting where all the board members are present. So that brings us to request for six-month extension, Center Avenue Realty Trust, 217 Center Avenue.
Representative?
I'm gonna refuse myself.
Yep. How you doing? We'd just like to let you know that there's only gonna be two of us voting on this. If you'd rather wait for next month and where there possibly could be three people to vote on it, it's up to you. The Burbine just stepped out. So if it's okay with you, we will be willing to vote on it. If you'd rather wait for three people, which is the usual, you can hold off till next month. So what are your thoughts?
Well, my name's Dave Smith, 941 Main Street, Hanger Mass. Would the board be looking favorably on that vote?
We can't tell you that.
Sure, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to come before you because we just got final pricing. And we still have two months to go, but I just wanted to be on the safe side, come before and get an extension. We're getting plans drawn up, have to get a building permit from Mr. Adams. With two months left on that.
Right, they're kind of close on it, right?
Yeah, I just didn't want to be rushing around and I just thought it would be prudent to come in and...
And you know you can only do this once, right?
Yes, I do.
And Marshall, you have anything you want to put in on this?
I have no problem, no issue with this at all.
No, I mean, the only thing I would add is that under Chapter 48, Section 10, the granting of extensions for six months is completely discretionary by the board. There's no showing that needs to be, you know, by the petitioner of any sort of hardship or any sort of qualifications. So with that in mind, I have...
Okay.
No problem.
We'll bring that to the floor, right?
No, it's the public hearing. It's just an administrative vote. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it's up to us.
All right. So in that case, I will make a motion to request a six-month extension for the variance at Center Avenue Realty Trust, 217 Center Avenue.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the, it's a little inconvenient, but you just gotta do what we gotta do at the time.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Yes, yep. Because we were told by Amy that it comes down to it, we got asked them first.
It being seven o'clock, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way. Abington on the petition of Deborah Crook, 810 North Street, Randolph for a special permit under 17532I for an in-law apartment in a variance for a farmer's porch under 17529 at 200 Green Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 4, Lot 36, in the R30 zone. Please come down.
Okay, and on this, let's see. Abington Sewage Department, this proposal location on Assessors Plan 4, Lot 36, appears to have no bearing on the storage system. And, let's see, 200 Green Street, correct? Okay. The planning board chimed in and said that they have, just want to make sure that the zoning board, make sure that they have an adequate onsite parking on the property. Okay, Marshall?
They need to understand that the... We don't have the square footage of the residence as it would be new. And we don't have the square footage of the in-law. And I need to know that the in-law can only be 900 square feet maximum or no more than 50% of the square footage of the primary residence.
Okay, yep.
So they just need to be mindful of that. It looks like, based on some rough calculations, I'm looking at the dimensions, look to be about, the house is to be about 2,200 square feet and the in-laws nowhere near that. I would guess about 780. So it appears that they will meet that. So I don't think there'd be an issue with regards to that. They are a conforming lot right now. The front porch would make it non-conforming. They have 38, I think it's .8 feet in the front right now with a 35-yard front setback. And the porch, the new proposed porch would be six feet. And that would give them 32.8 feet front yard setback. So they're taking what appears to be a conforming lot in all other respects, making it non-conforming and asking for...
A variance?
A variance, which is what they have asked for. And I don't know what the hardship is, but...
Right, yep.
Other than that, it appears... And who is going, they do have somebody to live in the in-law, I'm assuming, that's a relative. They didn't happen to mention that, but...
All right.
That's it.
Sir?
Yes.
Your name and address?
My aunt George Crook. I'm actually gonna live in the basement, in the in-law apartment. It's 860 square feet roughly.
Okay.
That's my wife Deborah. We're gonna live there.
Do you want to come up or...
I signed his back there. He actually lives in the house now.
So there's gonna be an addition, there's gonna be an addition...
Added to the house.
And then the downstairs will be?
Be in-law.
Be in-law.
I think I have it in one of the pages.
Can you explain a little bit about the farmer's porch?
Just adding the farmer's porch for looks, basically. To change the style.
Yeah.
It's the only reason we're putting it on there.
So right now, it's a ranch, correct?
Correct. We just want to change the look of it. I think it's gonna improve the looks of it.
I heard what Mr. Adams said, as far as the setback requirement is 35 feet.
Correct.
This is not gonna conform to that.
I think what it is, I think the middle of the stairs is actually...
Stairs don't count. Just the farmer's porch. It's kinda unique. Unless the stairs had a roof over them, they don't count, but...
Well, I think in the very middle of the house, or the house is on an angle, I think that's where the 35 feet would, so it's only one side of the house we're looking for.
The house is a little bit kiddy cornered on the lot. And we deal with the closest portion of it, which it says, according to the Land Survey, says it's 38.8 feet.
Yeah.
Minus six, but 32.8 feet. So you're taking something conforming and making it non-conforming. Then there's, for them to grant a variance, there is supposed to be a hardship, a proposed hardship. And that's what mass, general law, 48, Section 6 says.
It's just a variance, that's it.
And do you have any better pitches in this? Did you have something better to look at?
Actually, it's the same setup.
Oh, it is, really?
Yeah.
It's just bigger, though, right?
Yeah.
Let me just see.
That's my in-law.
So this is the basement, in-law? So this is the basement?
This is gonna be the garage.
Garage. Okay, all right, I see it now. Yep.
This is existing.
And this is the bathroom? Where's the kitchen down here?
Right here.
Okay, all right, in the living area, okay. Office. Okay, let me pass these down, a little bit bigger so we can understand them a little better. Thank you for bringing them.
And who owns the property now?
We do. Your wife, Deborah. Yes.
So how many bedrooms does it have right now?
Three.
Two?
Three.
Three.
Because the address on the application says Randolph.
That's where we live right at the moment. The son lives there at the house.
Oh, I see. Because it has to be a family member.
Yeah, well, the son lives at the house.
But you own it.
Correct.
Okay. So what is going in front of the, in the addition? There's gonna be a garage, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, there, right there.
Garage right there.
Twenty-two, yeah. Okay, gotcha. I was gonna say, could you ever slide the porch down, but it doesn't look like that's gonna be feasible.
No, no. There's that garage. How many feet is missing on the front?
Um...
Eight?
Thirty-eight point eight.
Thirty-two, uh, two, two and a half feet he'd be encroaching into the front yard setback on the right front.
But only a portion of it, right, yeah?
Yeah, I don't know the angle per se, and I can't do the calculations with regards to what the left front of the porch is, but that may be within...
Is there a standard size for what a porch is? Is it typically six feet or...
Less than four will make it difficult where people are sitting there and then somebody's trying to walk in front of them. And you probably, you may well have a rail there.
Marshall, does the planning board have a valid complaint about this or issue about parking? Did they talk to you about parking?
I just received this, this evening, this issue here with regards to this, but where they're putting, they've got a driveway and they're putting on a garage.
Right.
We have additional parking being created.
Right, okay, thank you. Yep, what I was thinking too. Yeah, it's standard, yeah.
Just a farmer's porch.
That's the big question, yep.
One, I mean, really, one section of the farmer's porch, potentially.
And Andy?
I have nothing now, if there's anybody here that wants to...
What's that, you got nothing?
I'm all set right now.
Marshall, you all set?
Yeah, it's actually, would be 2.2 feet encroaching on the right front.
On the right front, that's because it's at an angle?
It's at an angle, yep.
So, I mean, there is something there with the terms, the way the house is structured on the lot.
There it is, yeah. Yeah, there is an angle to it.
Yeah.
It's not parallel with the street.
So it's just, it's one section that is over and not the other section?
I don't know the degree of the angle, so I can't tell you how much.
Right. Looks like they're starting at 42 at one point, so that's 36, right? I can't do math.
Yeah, he's calling it, the porch doesn't extend the full length of the house. It looks like, they call it on the print as a 38 or 39. They're typically 28, 40. So it's probably inconformant, but I don't know the angle, so I can't do the math.
Right, it doesn't really show too well here, no, it doesn't.
I can't do the math.
No.
Okay. Open it up.
All right, anybody in the audience like to speak on behalf and just state your name and where you're from?
Ken Coburn, 193 Green Street, across the street from 200. Just to get a full understanding of the in-law apartment, our understanding, so it's your son that's living in?
Yes.
And you folks are moving in?
Correct.
Okay. Because just, you know, what's the difference between an in-law apartment and a two-family house when we get into here? And I heard you say that over 2,000 square feet, you're taking into consideration that the basement's done over at that point, because the house is 1,100 square feet right now. The living space right now is 1,100 square feet.
That's correct, but there, the proposed petition here is to increase the size of the existing structure. And as well, put in, the new structure would be, I can't calculate exactly because the dimensions given are too ambiguous, but close. It's about, I think, like calculating...
It's roughly 1200 square feet.
2,200 feet, I think, is what I think.
Yeah, well, yeah, I got the square footage of the property, it used to be, right now is, it exists as 1,120. That's the square footage of the living space.
I came up with, it would be plus or minus 2,200 feet, half of which would be 1,100. But you can't have an in-law more than 900.
And is the stipulation for an in-law that it has to be a relative of the tenant? Because the tenants, obviously, the tenant doesn't own, he doesn't own the house right now, they own the house.
Within the, I think it states the fourth degree of kinship, I think is what it says. But yes, it has to be a relative.
It has to be a relative.
And he will have to, the owner of the property who has the in-law has to supply this office with an affidavit yearly stating...
So if they're using his rental income, then there's a whole nother issue that comes for that. Another issue is that the parking issue, that what we've experienced in the past is there's a lot of debris in the yard, a lot of, a lot of over, sometimes overflow parking, and they end up using the front lawn. So if they're putting a porch on and then, you know, if they've got a trailer in their driveway, as they do now, if their parking becomes short, they start parking on the front lawn, how does that play out?
Trailers, depending on the trailer, are not allowed to be parked in front of the building line, which is, most simply put, the front of the house. It has to be behind the building line. Large vehicles, trailers, that type of stuff are not supposed to be parked in the driveway. And that would be, if somebody calls my office, I'm gonna have to send out zoning enforcement to go out, take a look at the situation. But that's not supposed to happen. Registered vehicle, if they, you choose to park your car in your front yard, registered, I don't have any say about that.
No, I don't say. I was just thinking with the farmer's porch, with the farmer's porch and everything, so yeah.
Well, it would be, for the applicant, it would probably be less enticing to put a car in front of your porch, but I don't have any control. The bylaws say what they say and that's it.
And the plans show that's a two-car garage underneath, so that might take some of the pressure off.
So right now, there's a one-car garage?
It's gonna be a two, it looks, right, is that, am I correct?
Correct. Okay. Okay. Were they going back further? I haven't seen any of the blue, are they going back further to get a two-car garage? Because it's a...
To the side and back.
Yep. They're extending the...
Yeah, they're extending out the back by about 18 feet, 16 feet beyond the existing structure now, and coming, and coming out, 22-foot wide garage.
Let me see something. This is upstairs.
The deck is pre-existing?
The front deck?
Back deck.
I don't remember.
It's gonna be about two to three feet setback from there. Coming over 22 feet.
From the stairs. Yep, okay. So is this the front of the, this is, or is that the side of the property?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so they're extending, so they're completely extending, all right, all right. That's what I didn't understand. You're going over all the way, and so the existing garage that's under the house right now gets completely, is lost.
Probably part of the in-law apartment.
No, no, okay.
This is going over 22 feet.
Yeah, there's no way to pull the car in there right now. Okay. Now that I see this, it's a completely different concept than what I thought.
The in-law apartment kind of is gonna be downstairs.
In-law apartment's coming in.
So is this the in-law apartment?
In-law.
Up here, no?
No.
It's all downstairs?
Let's see, in-law apartment.
Okay. So the garage is, you pulling the garage here and the entrance to the in-law apartment?
The entrance, right there.
Okay.
Right now, the garage is not as usable as you think.
Right.
Where it's, it comes in the side of the house, in the left rear.
Yep.
And that prop is gonna be incorporated into the downstairs area that he's proposing to occupy. If you look at this front elevation, it gives you a better feel for it.
Absolutely.
That's going to show probably 2, 20-foot wide driveway, where you'll have two spots in and then you'll have parking outside as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, close to the floor.
Mr. Crook, just out of curiosity, how many cars you anticipate parking at the house?
I would say no more than total, four cars.
Three or four?
That's it.
Because you got a two-car garage now in this, and then you'll have...
Well, no, there's no car, the garage's there now and it's not used. You can't use it.
No, I mean, in the future, two-car garage if there's a pass.
Correct.
And then, how wide's your driveway now?
Probably 15 feet.
Is it for two cars or?
Down, down the end it is, yes. Two cars down the end, beginning, no. But the whole driveway's gonna be as wide as the...
As the garage.
Yeah.
As the garage.
And what do you got for a trailer?
There's a prob, what is it, a 17-foot closed trailer?
For?
Storage, maybe, more or less.
You plan on putting that in the yard, in the garage, in the driveway or on the side of the house?
Put it behind us if I have to. It's not gonna be in front of the house.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so it's back to us, guys, all right? What's your thoughts?
The in-law apartment, Dave.
Amy, the in-law is fine.
What's that?
The in-law apartment, Dave, fine.
Yep, okay.
Farmer's porch. I know it's a small...
What are we looking for here? We're looking for size?
Yeah, I mean, so it would have to be, I mean, the shape of the lot, how the house is structured on the lot would be the only sort of hardship.
Yeah, it is, again, like Marshall said, it's very difficult to read this. I mean, but it does look like the house does have an angle to it.
Yeah.
Lot square of the street.
I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, oh, no, never mind, I'm reading that wrong.
The 2.2 feet that we're talking about that he's encroaching on is at the very right front of the house. That's a 40-foot house. He's set in two and a half feet on either side of the front of the house, where it's a 40-foot house and it's a 35-foot front porch. Without infringing upon the bylaws, you could just stipulate to him, and he'd have to have his engineer do the calculations, how far it's gonna come in and how far it can come out to stay within, because it's very close. 2.2 feet at the worst point, and he isn't even there, he's two and a half feet in. So it's two or less, my guess is.
So you could just make the porch a little smaller?
You'd make it a little narrower or, and, and a little, not quite as deep, and then you could probably tuck it in. And then you don't have to show hardship.
And you don't need a variance, basically?
No.
You understand what?
I understand what you're saying. That supposedly in the middle of that porch is exactly 35 feet, yeah. That's what he says, 35 feet with the new porch on it in the middle, right where the set of stairs are gonna be coming down. That's what he, he put there, 35 feet right there. So it's the right-hand side we're looking at.
But the 38.8 goes to the end of the building?
38.8 is at the very end of the structure.
Which doesn't take into account...
The two and a half feet, it appears to be set in because it's a 40-foot wide house.
So it might not be 38.8, it might be...
Well, it's not at, it won't be 2.2 feet, because I'm deducting six from the 38.8. Coming up with 32.8 means he's encroaching 2.2 feet, if the deck were at the outside of the house and it's, so it's less than that.
Yeah, so I think you're right, I think you could just...
You could tuck that in, probably.
Form it to the 35-foot setback and just readjust the size of the porch.
Making a five-foot, a five-foot porch, you can do, making a four-foot, like you say, there's no room at all.
And you don't need a...
Four or five-foot porch, or you bring it, make it a little narrower.
Right.
Depending on what your engineer tells you with the calculations, and then you can decide how you want. I want it wider and, but not as, and not as deep, or we'll have it narrower and keep the six feet.
Because you gotta, you have to go by that variance law.
Yeah, and that's what we're constrained by is, you have to show that because of the shape of the lot, basically, I think in this case, you have a hardship. I haven't really heard any evidence of a hardship at this point.
I mean, the other thing you could do is just withdraw the request for the variance for the farmer's porch. You could see what your engineer could do, and then if you wanted to come back here with additional plans, saying, you know...
And you could show it to us better than it is right now, I mean...
I don't need a variance, I don't need to come back.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, if you want to redesign it.
But you could withdraw without us turning it down, just in case you had to come back. If we turn it down, you can't come back for, what, two years?
Two years, yeah.
Two years.
Unless it's substantial.
There's no hardship to have it, basically.
All right, that's fine. If you admit there's no hardship.
So if you turn it down, you turn it down, it's one of those things. I ask for it, you say no, it's no. That's all.
No, we close it to the floor, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
It is, it's gonna be what it's gonna be.
Does it matter if it's her house?
Oh, she's one of the...
Well, she got a chance to come and sit here. That's true. She's actually on the floor.
So basically, you're saying if I cut it down to four feet wide at that end?
Whatever you do.
If your engineer decide where, you know, show you how wide, where the point is and...
It's in the middle of the porch, right where the stairs are, it meets...
If that's what he tells you and that's what he stamps, and then you can build it right, right to the edge.
Yeah.
And it don't, doesn't account for the stairs, it's just the deck, as long as there's no roof over the stairs.
So right now, and he's telling me, in the middle of stairs, it...
I'm not saying that.
No, he's telling me.
He is.
He already told me that, right here in the middle. It meets...
It meets only...
All setback.
Yes.
With the stairs or without the stairs?
No, he didn't say what this is or what else. He just, this, where do you meet all your setbacks, right here.
Well, right there, you're at six feet, you're okay, if he's telling you that. The further you go up to the right, as you face it from the street, the further you gotta come in. And he'll tell you, based on how wide, where that point is.
Okay.
Because there's gonna be a line drawn right across there, 35 feet right across your lot, which is the building envelope. As long as you stay within that.
Okay.
That's what you want to do.
Marshall, check.
That's fine, that's fine, I don't...
All right, so...
Do you want to withdraw the variance, or do you want us to vote on it?
Just hold on, because it's gonna be, if it can't go anyhow, it's can't go. I can't, there's no hardship.
I know, but you're gonna lose the opportunity to come back.
Withdraw without my advice, withdraw without prejudice.
Definitely.
We're giving you advice, but it's probably...
Okay, that's it. So, well, first deal with the...
First deal with the...
...applicants, well, his request to withdraw, make a motion to allow...
Okay, and then we do the special permit, right.
Okay, all right.
Next, sound good?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll make a motion to allow the petitioner's request to withdraw his application for variance for the farmer's porch under 175-29 and 200 Green Street.
Second. All favor?
Aye. All right, and I will make a motion to approve the petition of Deborah Crook, 810 North Street Randolph, for a special permit under 175-32I for an in-law apartment at 200 Green Street.
Second. All favor? And, Marshall, what they have to do every year is, just, just again?
Yeah, every year, there'll be an affidavit that the owner will tell us who's living there, and that's required ever since '05. And has it notarized that who's living there.
Okay. All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay.
After 7:05, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 11, 2019, at 7:05, at Abington Town Office's 500 Glen Owits Way, Abington, on the petition of Frank Willett, 95 Parkview Street, Apartment 312, South Waymouth, for a special permit under 175-32I for an in-law apartment at 71 Murphy Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 51, Lot 16B, in the R30 zone.
Okay, before we start, just the application says 11 Murphy Street, just wanna bring that up, and, let's see, no bearing on the water, and again, the planning board's concerned about street parking.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. I'm supposed to be making this presentation on behalf of Frank Willett, I'm the owner of the property, I'll be building the house for his son, daughter-in-law, and he'll be living in the in-law apartment. However, we had a clerical error in my office, and we didn't get the ad in on time, so I'm really just here to request whether it's a continuation or rescheduling or narrowing to the next one.
Guys?
Yep.
No problem, bro?
All right, so, on for the next hearing, and... So, he's gonna have to publish that, though, right, so, it'll be republished, so we don't have to give the notice?
And this has to be fixed, too?
Right.
Of the 11 Murphy.
Want me to do that now?
No, no, it comes to you, Nancy, right?
Yep.
Because the application says 11, so, you straighten out, that out before the next meeting.
Just another clerical error.
Yeah, it's okay, it'll get done, right?
Things happen. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the request to an extension for the...
Continue?
To continue, yep. This petition until the August 8 meeting.
Okay, all favor? Okay.
Aye.
All favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Sorry, I've been out, I'm a little rusty lately. I've been on vacation, a little rusty. All right.
You don't have to agree to a continuance.
What's that?
That's something to vote on, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, being after...
What?
I don't think so. I thought we, you agreed, your parties agreed to a continuance.
You vote on it?
You vote on a continuance.
Okay. I'm pretty sure we've done that. All right, next?
All right, being after 7:10 PM, the, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 11, 2019, at 7:10 PM, at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glen Owits Way, Abington, on the petition of Michael Benome, 34 Harrison Avenue, Apartment 3, Abington, for a special permit under 175-21A1, to build a single-family dwelling rather than a duplex. He has a special permit to build at 34 Harrison Avenue. Property is located on Assessor's Map 53, Lot 160, in the commercial business district.
Okay, on 34 Harrison Ave, this proposal located, and this is from the storage, PS have no bearing on the storage, and... On Harrison Ave, from the planning board, the planning board believes it's a special permit granting authority for an all-resident use in a central business district, is the planning board's, under Abington zoning board bylaw 175-38C2. In other words, what the planning board is saying, that this shouldn't be going in front of the zoning board, it should be going to the planning board.
For the special permit?
For the special permit. Because they say this is a resident...
Strictly residential units.
In a central business district, a new. So, what do you say to that?
Well, I guess I say maybe we go back to the planning board.
Oh, you've already been to the planning board?
No, I, well, we've been to the planning board, yes, Mike has been to the planning board. The history here is 34 Harrison Ave, it was right next to Abington Bank, and going back to 2016, that lot consisted of a three-family home and a single-family home at the, at the front of the lot. The single-family home burnt down in August of 2016, and a year later, Michael's predecessor and interest, he didn't own the property at the time, but the fellow who owned the property at the time that the building burnt down, went before the planning board, got a special permit to build a two-family home on the property. And so, Mike sat on that because he wasn't sure what he was going to do, and he's recently put plans together, and what he wanted to do, instead of a two-family, was to kind of reduce the scope of it, and just build a single-family. So, he applied to the building department, and I think the building department made the right call, honestly, because if I'm not mistaken, I won't put words in your mouth, Marshall, but I think what the building inspector said was that he was denying the permit, because what was being proposed was a single-family, and what he had for approval was a two-family.
Okay.
And the ability to rebuild the single-family had lapsed, because two years had gone by since the building had been destroyed, is that accurate?
It is, yeah, pretty accurate. The, it wasn't abandoned use, it was the reconstruction has to take place within two years. And it didn't. The fire was in August of 16. Planning allowed a special permit for a two-family in June of 17. Then, there was something about, they went back, the special permits are, are good for three years. Mass General Law, Section 48, Section 9, amended that to make special permits good for three years in August of 16, so, that special permit that he received in June of 17 will expire June 5 of 20, so it's still valid, but however, on August 17 of 18, which was two years from the fire, there was no restoration, so all grandfathered rights lapsed at that point in time. And now he wants a special permit for a single-family.
Which would be new construction, correct?
Well, he's starting from scratch, he needs a special permit, and if you look at 175-38, all residential uses, and I agree with planning, their note here that they sent to us, in 1, 1A, 2, 3, and 4.
Is theirs?
All are under their jurisdiction, and in this case, it says that in 175-38, planning for a single-family must meet, a special permit for planning must meet 175-38C3A, C3B, C3D, and C3F. And there's also, he encroaches on the right-hand side as you face the building.
Is that gonna be a variance?
No, that is allowed per Note 13. That is a special permit from you guys, and he currently has it sighted 12 feet off the street, which is, I think, probably where the old building actually was, and it says in CBD, you will not be more than 10. So, if it was to be sighted where it is now, he would need a variance, otherwise, pull it two feet forward, and he would be 10 feet, and it would be allowed by right.
So, right now, it's outstanding as a variance at the moment?
There's no variance here. It's a special permit from planning for a single-family.
Okay.
And, and then he'd have to come in front of this board, see Note 13, with dimensional density and use, and the setbacks, for the side yard setback, which I think was 5.6 feet off the right side, says you'll be 10. So, that would be a special permit from you guys, which...
Would be, is not what we have here.
Special permit or variance.
Special permit.
Special permit for the setbacks.
If you look at the notes in the dimensional density and use table here, and I agree, this is a little bit confusing. Under CBD, you'll see, under front yard, minimum depth, none, however, it says, see Note 12, and Note 12 will show you that the minimum, this is unusual, minimum front yard will be, now, excuse me, the maximum front yard will be 10 feet.
Right.
We're usually dealing with minimums, but in this case, we're not, so, that would be a variance if the applicant chose to request it, however, and if you look at, on the CBD side yard, it says, see Note 13, which will tell you maybe zero feet by special permit, or zero feet for existing buildings. That special permit speaks to you, this board, in my opinion.
So, they need a special permit from the planning board and us?
Mm-hmm.
Most likely?
If he wanted to move forward with the single-family use, in my opinion, yes, and I have, I had to consult counsel with this.
Okay.
On a couple of occasions.
May I ask, Marshall, just so, I'm clear walking out of here, is it your position that if this man wants to build a two-family residence, that was approved by the planning board, it was extended in March of this year for a period of six months?
Wasn't necessary. The planning board...
The extension was not necessary, but the permit, my, my question to you, if I may, is just that the permit stands, so, as he sits here tonight, as I look at the decision of the planning board from 2017, that, that is a valid decision, which gives him the permission to go forward and build a two-family residence on that property, if he sought to, a building permit tomorrow?
Yes and no. If you wanted to proceed with the two-family, in the same footprint, you would, he would, the applicant, would still need a special permit for the side yard setback from CBA, because though, as the two-year period in August of 18, the two-year without the restoration, all grandfathered rights lapsed, period. Special permit that you got from planning did lapse.
That's right.
But all other rights that were, were grandfathered, which was part of the five-yard locate, the 5.6 feet off the right side, that lapsed, that no longer exists, and if he chose to move forward with the existing sighting and the 12-foot setback business, that would be on the proposed plot plan that showed on this plan here, he would need a variance or move it two feet closer to the street, and then he would not need that relief.
May I ask, with respect to the five-yard setback on the side, this is the plan that was approved by the planning board pursuant to...
They don't have the right to approve what, I do not believe they have the right to approve, to approve the setbacks.
Well, if we look at the special permit in section...
I'm not gonna argue with you about...
No, no, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand and avoid four trips back here.
And maybe I'm wrong, and...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting you're wrong, I'm just trying to avoid four trips back here.
Exactly, I, I agree with you.
So, what I'm asking is that the planning board approved this plan for a two-family residence, okay, and it included a five-foot setback. So, this plan, if Mr. Benome came to you tomorrow morning, this decision and this plan that was approved pursuant to this decision, would that not give him the right to a building permit?
I don't think so.
How many years?
I would be contacting counsel for their opinion with regards to that. If it does, I'm good with it, I don't have any problem with it.
It's a, it's a three-year permit, right? And it was granted in 2017.
But did the grandfather...
The grandfathering is gone.
Gone.
Right.
Because it hasn't been built.
The special permit granting authority for the side yard setback is, in my opinion, written in this book, is this, this board.
I think what he's saying, Ron, is that the planning board had no authority to grant that special permit for this...
And I may be wrong, and I would check with counsel, but that's not in front of us today, so I'm not here dealing with that, otherwise, I would've...
I understand, but there's no crowd waiting, and I just would like to inquire further, if I may, okay? And I'm not being argument.
I know you're not.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand where you are, so that I can understand where we should be going forward. When I look at your special permit as it's defined in your bylaw, it says that a special permit is not a variance, but may include a variance of dimensional and similar requirements incidental to the special permit.
It's possible.
This plan was approved with a five-foot setback.
I, I, I agree, I know what you're saying. The answer is, I don't know, I would contact our counsel.
Yeah.
It appears to me that not, but I, I don't know, that's what counsel is for, that's what I use them for, but that wasn't presented to me, so I can't...
Yeah, I mean, we're here for something else, really, so...
We're here for a single family.
And, planning board is saying that it is theirs, not ours.
Yeah.
Which I think is the case.
Based on the planning board's...
We have to get back to that.
We're gonna go back to the planning board.
I, I understand you wanna get clarification, whether or not they can give a special permit for everything, or else, what do you have to come up with?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I think Marshall said he'll check with counsel.
Yeah, yeah.
When I have an application, yeah.
Okay.
When you have an application for building permit?
Yeah, that's what I would, I'm, I'm not spending, I spend the town's money to clarify issues.
Well, I just...
Like this is not what, you know, is this buildable, is that buildable, is, I don't...
I'm not asking that, Marshall.
I don't clarify.
You made an interpretation, and you denied the building permit when this man came before you, okay? I believe, I believe it was correct as well.
I don't know the answer to the question you're asking.
I'm just trying to inquire, so that I know where you are, so that I know where we have to be, that's all. It's easy, easy.
So, maybe you ask the planning board, when you're in front of them, whether or not they think they have the authority to grant it?
Right, because they're the ones, they're the ones saying right now that this, this should go to them, so...
Maybe they were basing it on grandfathered, or maybe not, I don't know the answer.
That's a question, that's a big question about grandfather.
I think they do, if you read your bylaw, it says specifically that the special permit granting authority does have the right pursuant to the grant of a special permit to give dimensional, to change the dimensional setback.
Maybe there, he's absolutely right, I don't know. Where is, where's it written in there, and I will double-check that.
Is that in the definition?
Oh, just in the definitions.
Definitions?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's get back to what we're here for, okay?
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, I would like to withdraw the petition before the zoning board in favor of refiling tomorrow morning with the planning.
Without prejudice, thank you.
Without prejudice, please.
I'll make a motion to allow the, oh, actually, do we need to open this up to anybody?
I don't, if it's being continued, we don't have to open it up, do we?
They opened, did you open?
Oh, no, they were drawing, so we don't, they were drawing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to allow the petitioner's request to withdraw with, without prejudice, in a second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it, anything else, guys, on the, for us to shut her off?